All right, well, thank you, everyone, for tuning in to tonight's city council work session on a stormwater utility feasibility study. I'm going to pass it over to Suzanne Woodland in just a second. But, you know, however we manage to organize this work session immediately following one of the biggest rain events that I can remember, you know, it's done effectively because I think stormwater mitigation, the cost to engage with stormwater is on all of our minds, at least with those folks like myself with a wet basement. So really looking forward to this. I know this is like in the weeds, but I think this is one of the things where we can align on some goals that ultimately benefit our water system, both the supply and the disposal. So Suzanne, thanks so much.
Great. Suzanne Woodland, Deputy City Manager and Deputy City Attorney. So, good evening. I'm excited to be here and talking about this subject. And so, yeah, we're going to talk this evening about a potential stormwater utility. And what I'm going to do is kind of lay out quickly the roadmap and your tour guides for this evening's study. So with me this evening, we have Brian Getz, the Deputy Public Works Director, and I'm, man, he brought the hat.
Brought the hat, of course.
We also have Jamie McCarty, who's our GIS and Stormwater Manager, also at Public Works. We have Bill Archery from VHB. He's been working with the city on stormwater issues and studying it and helping us plan for it for quite a number of years now.
Few years.
And then we'll have by Zoom, we'll have David Hyder, who is our rate consultant of several years. He typically works on our water and sewer rates, and we have drafted him for this purpose tonight. So Brian and Jamie will start out first giving an overview of the city's stormwater system. Then Bill Archery is really going to sort of walk you through the federal requirements, because there are federal requirements for how we manage and deal with our stormwater and the quality of that water when it discharges to water bodies. So I really think when I put on my stormwater hat and I think about how we pay for it, I see the utility as a way to more equitably distribute the costs that are related to that, because we're going to pay for it one way or the other to meet those federal requirements. So the really, the question is, how are you going to pay for it and who is going to pay for it? So that's really what I think about. And then, as I said, Dave Hyder is going to walk us through sort of the utility structure. These are not new. There are some in other places, and really looking at the finances of it. What would it look like for your residential homeowner? So that's kind of the tour, and then we'll do a little Q and A, and of course, at the mayor's discretion, we'll do the public comment. So one of the things we thought would be helpful, because in the stormwater land, there's a lot of, if you could flip to the next slide, there's a lot of shorthand sometimes, and it helps to define some basic terms. So stormwater is really your water from rain, melting snow, your occasional sleet, that doesn't soak into the ground. Impervious cover. So this is important for determining really our payment, how we define who's going to pay what. Any surface in the urban landscape that cannot effectively absorb or infiltrate rainfall is impervious cover. So that includes things like sidewalks and roads, rooftops, parking lots. Then we have our EPA MS4 permit. And MS4 is the shorthand we all use to talk about those federal requirements, that federal permit, it's municipal, separate storm sewer system, and none of us want to say that, so we all say MS4. So you will hear that often, and that really is referring to those federal requirements. BMPs, you'll also hear that sort of talked about quite a bit. That's best management practices. That includes your rain gardens and your other efforts that you make, other structural, vegetative, to treat, prevent, reduce water pollution. So taking out some of those pollutants that are in stormwater, particularly when it comes off roadways. We're talking about a utility. So this is a fee-based system. It's not a tax. Portsmouth Water and Sewer Enterprise funds utilities, and really that's the concept we're working off of here. And really, the whole purpose of the stormwater utility is really to have the funds necessary in order to create and address flood and erosion control measures. We know, as we're just talking about, the greater rain events, to improve water quality, ecological preservation, and really reduce those pollutant loads from stormwater. Next slide. And so, always a starting point, putting on the lawyer hat. We do have enabling legislation here in New Hampshire that allows municipalities to develop stormwater utilities. So with that, I'm turning it over to Brian Getz.
All right. Thank you, Suzanne. Mayor, you queued it up very well. As we were preparing this, it was quite dry, and then, yes, we got about two and a half inches of rain Thursday into Friday. But rain, much-needed rain after a very dry summer, so we continue to be in somewhat of a drought. But certainly, events like that, if they continue, we will be out of a drought. But overall, the seacoast area in Portsmouth averages 45 inches of precipitation, almost four feet of precipitation. And basically, we manage that in one way or another via our stormwater program. And that program is dedicated to improving water quality in our drainage areas, reducing the flooding impacts. I think, though, we had two and a half inches of rain on Friday, we did not really have a whole lot of flooding, so that's a good credit to, somewhat to the stormwater program and many of the other infrastructure improvements we've had. Public education and overall management. Next slide, please. So in recognizing that, in FY19, the city created a separate stormwater funding, a special revenue fund, which further identifies the costs and efforts the city has put towards managing our stormwater. And currently, now that fund is 50% funded from the general fund and 50% from the sewer. And this has offered us the opportunity to improve our tracking of costs, the regulatory requirements, as Bill will speak to here in a little bit, and project our future funding needs for the system, including looking at a stormwater utility option. So more recently, we've employed the services of VHD to further look at the stormwater utility aspects. One of the big components that Jamie will talk about is how VHB went in and analyzed all the impervious areas for all properties in the city, because, again, the impervious area is how a fee-based approach would be based on. And then, again, what future, current and future regulatory requirements will impact us. And with that information, David Hyder and Stantec have been able to put together a utility pro forma and some rate projections, and understand that a lot of the data that David will present speaks to an FY24. We don't anticipate that the budget itself will be ready by that time, but for pro forma purposes, to talk about how utility is structured, that's his basis. Next slide. So what are the benefits? Well, you would have a dedicated funding source. So again, currently, we're a 50-50. Fees, the funding is from the general fund and sewer. The fee would be based on the relative usage of volume produced on each property. Speaking before this, it would be very similar. Do you have a meter going into your house that measures the amount of water you use? This would be, if you had a meter on your property, how much water comes off your property in a rain event or precipitation. It's more sustainable and equitable, and it has the opportunity for improved watershed stewardship. This would be opportunities for each property owner to do their own. They'd be incentivized to do their own work on their own properties that, you know, would improve stormwater management, low-impact development, and therefore, they'd get some credits for that. And then, it would assist us with meeting the Great Bay Total Nitrogen General Permit. So the general permit, as you may know, ties all of the water discharges in the city, both at our wastewater facilities and the stormwater. Next slide, please. So Western Kentucky has been doing this for a number of years, and most recently, they updated their survey of stormwater utilities throughout the country. And as you can see by this map and also the information, this isn't really a unique concept. It's, you know, over 2,000 of them in the country, but there are currently none in New Hampshire. So I know there's a couple other communities, Dover and Concord are looking into it, but there are currently no stormwater utilities. More recently, in New England, there are some recent examples. I'm going to go through those in a second. And they also point out, you know, what the average charges are and how those basis of charges are developed. And it's essentially a monthly fee average of around $6 per single-family resident. Next slide, please. So, near us, Burlington, Vermont, very similar demographics to the city of Portsmouth. They spent a couple years reviewing what a stormwater program would look like, utility, and they established a dedicated program in 2009, and currently, they have a budget of about $2 million per year. Next slide. Northampton, Mass. In 2014, they spent a year and a half deliberating on this, and you can see here, they base the property owners on size of square footage, so they fit into different categories and are billed accordingly. And then, with larger commercial properties, they calculate it on an individual basis, based on the estimated area of impervious surface on their property. Next slide. More recently, Portland, Maine, again, spent two years implementing a stormwater utility program. This is how they base their equivalent residential unit. So they essentially prorate based on amount of impervious cover. And you can see, they offer credits up to 50% for residential properties and 60% on commercial properties for stormwater BMPs. Next slide. Thank you. So we've put together a tentative timeline, as I said, to get everything rolled out and developed and enough back-and-forth with council, and really implementing such program in realistic terms will be soon into budget for FY24. So there are certain components that would have to be totally ironed out prior to that. So we anticipate this work session, which is occurring right now, there'll be some follow-up, and then we would take the feedback from tonight to continue our program development. And if it seems feasible and doable and something that council wants to continue to pursue, we would continue on that and sometime next year, be in a sense where a stormwater utility would be part of the FY25 budget, and then July 1, the program would begin. But again, this is all pro forma. This is just basically based on what's most realistic, and again, very similar to the communities I pointed to, the timeline they spent for that. So with that, I'm going to turn it to Jamie real quick. He's going to just provide a quick snapshot of the stormwater system we have and the components there.
Thank you, Brian. Thank you all. I'm Jamie McCarty. I'm the GIS and Stormwater Manager for the city. Next slide. So as the GIS manager, I like to use maps to tell some of the story. So the stormwater system really began as the sewer system. Any water that needed to be directed off of impervious surfaces was put into the sewer and sent out to the river. Next slide. But as the city developed and primary treatment was developed for the city, the city found that the system was being inundated and overwhelmed, and there was a need to separate the stormwater system from the sewer. So in the '50s, they began their first stormwater separation projects. Next slide. So in an ideal system, you have a separate stormwater system from the sewer, shown on the figure on the right. It's the green pipes, taking water from the street and sending it away. The city itself has over 60 miles of piping, over 3,000 catch basins, almost 1,000 manholes, all directly related to the stormwater system. We already have quite a few treatment systems that are managed by the city, and we have 204 regulated outfalls. So these are outfalls that fall under the MS4 permit and require us to do regular observations, wet weather sampling of them. So I'll speak to that a little bit more in a minute. Next slide. Suzanne briefly mentioned BMPs. These are the treatment devices around the city. Here are some examples. You've got your rain gardens, tree box filters, underground storage, sand filters, pervious pavement. These are all types of BMPs that the city implements. Next slide. So we've talked about impervious surface. So the map on the left there shows all the impervious surfaces in the city, which represents about 28% of the total land area in the city. But what you'll see also is that the number-one property, parcels in the city by count are residential properties. But they don't represent, you know, the largest impervious surfaces within the city. So, next slide. So some of the operational stuff that the city does, we clean catch basins regularly. We're inspecting them. We're cleaning and inspecting the drain lines. These are all requirements of our permit. Street sweeping is an important aspect of our stormwater management. Leaf collection also. So, next slide. So that's more of the operational stuff. This is, BMPs can also be non-structural, so a lot of these efforts that we do with public outreach, including, you know, educating the public about how to pick up after their pets, how to properly handle and manage lawns, leaf litter, and we also send out mailers to businesses, encouraging them to use low-impact development and contracting Green Snow Pro certified winter operations contractors. Slide. So currently, and in the next year, so we've just started our year five of the permit, we're going to be continuing wet weather investigations. So when we get, you know, at least a third of an inch of rain, we go out and we sample outfalls. We're about 50% of the way through 204 outfalls, so we have to visit during not the best conditions. But we're then investigating the catchments for those outfalls. That involves looking into the system further upstream. And in the next year, we're going to continue to implement our salt reduction plan. Next slide. So now I'll hand it off to Bill.
Thanks, Jamie.
Thanks, Jamie. Good evening. My name is Bill Archery, Water Resource Consultant with VHB. So I'm going to give a brief overview of the MS4 permit requirements. Next slide, please. So the permit came out in 2017, became effective in 2018, and lasts for five years. It'll be renewed next year in 2023. The New Hampshire permit applies to 44 communities. These highlighted in blue, which are centered in the south-central, the southeast portion of the state. And these represent the more densely developed towns and city of the state. So the permit has essentially six minimum control measures. Public education messages that Jamie just highlighted, that need to be distributed every year, to focus on educating residents about particular issues on water quality. The public involvement and engagement piece, which is provide an opportunity for residents to have input on the stormwater program, which the city does through various hearings and meetings and the postings on the DPW website. The illicit discharge detection and elimination program, which is probably the most labor-intensive, which is the sampling outfall that Jamie just mentioned, sampling in dry weather, sampling in wet weather, and investigating each of the outfalls to make sure that there aren't things connected into the storm drain system that shouldn't be connected into the storm drain system. That requires a fair amount of effort. The permit does allow 10 years for this to be completed, which Jamie said the city is about 50% complete. The permit also requires that the city adopt enhanced stormwater regulations that would require new and redevelopment projects to have enhanced treatment on their property, or graded treatment on their property. And the city has adopted those regulations, I think, at the end of 2021. There's good housekeeping measures, which is the catch basin cleaning, the street sweeping, the leaf litter pickup, the handling of materials at DPW, storage, things of that sort. The other measure is developing separate plans and measures to reduce the, any contributions to water quality impairments, which there are few chloride, nitrogen, and bacteria in the city. Next slide, please. So what do we expect going forward, as the permit's going to be renewed next year? The EPA has already signaled they'll probably continue with the six minimum measures, and they've also indicated they'll probably require more stormwater treatment of city property. The current permit already requires at least one stormwater BMP be installed at the end of 2024. But they are likely to probably incorporate some of the same requirements that are in the Great Bay Total Nitrogen General Permit, to require additional treatment to reduce the nitrogen. There'll be the continued sampling of the stormwater outfalls. The city, we have developed a salt reduction plan to make salt use more efficient and reduce the chloride impairments. And then there are continued good housekeeping measures as well. One other aspect that the permit requires is tracking of stormwater BMPs that the city has installed and tracking the operation and maintenance of these BMPs, as well as the operation and maintenance on private property of BMPs. So this program called the PTAP, Pluton Tracking and Accounting Program, has been developed over the years with collaboration of the UNH Stormwater Center, representatives from various seacoast communities, and New Hampshire DES. So this program allows the city to do this tracking. And part of the new regulations also required that private property owners maintain their stormwater BMPs as well, so make sure that they are functioning. So that's something that Jamie's doing on this PTAP. It also addresses the Great Bay Total Nitrogen Permit compliance. So focusing on sort of what are the bigger things that are going to perhaps have the biggest MS4 compliance costs in the future. I mentioned the salt reduction plan. There will be some equipment upgrades needed to use more liquid deicer, to make salt use more efficient, the stormwater infrastructure improvements, the BMP retrofits, and not directly related to the permit itself, but the system capacity needs to handle extreme precipitation events and be the city more resilient for climate change, which should be addressed through the capital improvement plan. So lastly, when we, next slide, please. So as part of the stormwater master plan that we completed earlier in the year, we did look at projections for future compliance costs for the MS4 permit for the various activities. And you can see for this current year and last year, fiscal 2022, there was cost items in there for IDA and catchment investigation, and these are just the lab costs and the field equipment costs, professional services, and kind of totals of $64, $65,000. But going into fiscal '24 is when some of the implementation pieces, particularly the salt reduction plan, the equipment upgrades, we do have a lineup for the Sagamaw Creek Watership Plan, which would address the bacteria issues in that watershed. And we'd start getting into planning and engineering for the stormwater BMPs, and then the actual construction costs, which are in there as sort of a lineup, was part of a bonding financing program. So the total cost is going to creep up considerably, I think $300,000 to $450,000 by fiscal '27. And at this point, I will hand over to David Hyder, who's joining us by video, to talk about the stormwater utility and the various options.
Thank you, Bill.
All right. Thank you, Bill. Good evening. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yep.
Yep.
All right, perfect. All right. Well, thank you for letting me join by video, and I'm going to talk just overall about the structure of the utility. And to get to that point, we want to talk about the revenue requirements. What does it actually cost to provide stormwater service? We'll talk a little bit more about impervious area and how that leads into the stormwater fee structure, and look at some options there, and then I'll wrap up with stormwater fee credits. So on the next slide, just in terms of how we've developed the revenue requirements. So we took the fiscal year '23 stormwater budget and used that as a starting point. And then we've really augmented that with what does this look like if it's a standalone enterprise fund? So we've allocated the shared salaries amongst water, sewer, and stormwater. And I'll talk about that more in a minute. And then we've also augmented it with the expenditures that were identified in the master plan. So many of the expenditures that Bill just touched on, including the MS4 compliance, and just the needs of the system going forward. And then, in order to look at a longer-term projection, we did forecast each of the expenditures to assume for some inflation going forward. So on the next slide, as Brian mentioned, we're using '24 as just as our starting point, and this is pro forma only. As Brian mentioned, we're anticipating potentially having the fee in place by fiscal year '25. So again, this is just the starting point. But what this shows is just the major categories of expenditures, so salaries, operations and maintenance on the system. and maintenance on the system, vehicles, equipments, and then the last two are the regulatory requirements. And when we look at your current budget for fiscal year '23, inflate that a little bit for '24, that's what's represented there in the existing column. And then as we go over to the right, we have some additional additions to the stormwater expenditures in fiscal year '24 to account for the fact that it would be a standalone enterprise fund. So you're currently splitting costs when it comes to salaries and benefits between water, sewer, and the general fund. And this would now split costs between water, sewer, stormwater, and the general fund. So just really a reallocation of salaries and benefits. Then the other items were identified in the master plan, additional O&amp;M, additional vehicles, and then the MS4 compliance and the Great Bay Total Nitrogen Compliance, bringing it to a total of $1.9 million. But I think one of the most important distinctions here is that these additions are not due to the formation of a potential utility, but these are really costs when we look at what does it truly cost to provide stormwater service? And obviously, some of the changes that Bill alluded to in terms of regulatory requirements. So on the next slide, I'm just showing it in a slightly different manner. You can see the biggest percentage or biggest component of the fiscal year '24 revenue requirements is salaries and benefits. And again, that's not really new individuals. It's mostly allocations or reallocations of existing staff. And then the other big components are the regulatory compliance costs, which are over about a half a million dollars. Within that MS4 compliance costs, we are including a million dollars per year in capital costs, which we're assuming would be debt funded over a certain period of time. So on the next slide, we, in terms of how we forecast things forward, as I mentioned, we did take on a line item by line item basis. We're forecasting over a 10-year period, salaries, wages, repair and maintenance, the various line items, assuming inflation factors on those. And then for that capital cost, we are assuming that you would debt fund that 30-year maturity at a 5% interest rate. So what this looks like on the next slide over the forecast period, so we're starting again fiscal year '24, purely a pro forma, $1.9 million in total. You can see the various components that make up the expenditures. And we're forecasting that by 2031, with inflation, the ongoing capital investment for the MS4 compliance, that should be about $2.4 million by that point in time. Obviously, this is just a forecast at this point. So that's the revenue requirements. Now I want to talk about, kind of transition to talk about what the fee structure and the utility would look like. And we've spent a lot of time talking about impervious area this evening. And the reason that's important is because that's, as Brian mentioned, that's really the basis for how most communities assess a stormwater fee. It's been shown that impervious cover on a parcel is the number one factor for the amount of runoff that's going to be generated on that parcel or stormwater contributions. So what you can see here is in terms of the distribution or the the amount of impervious, commercial has the largest percentage. Single family has only about 15% of the total impervious, but they make up about 70% of the total parcels. So that factor is important when we consider kind of the administration of the stormwater fee. So next slide, we just need to make some decision points in terms of who would pay the stormwater fee. And there's pretty common precedent within the industry in terms of what types of properties would be exempted. And the one that by far is most common is public and public roads and right of ways, because essentially, the public roads and right of ways serve as a key component of the stormwater system. So the curb and gutter and things of that sort help to convey stormwater in the system. So very, very common to not assess a stormwater fee to public roads and right of ways. Also, entities that have their own MS4 permits are exempted typically. So we've exempted the P's Development Authority. And then for practical and administrative purposes, we're assuming that any parcel that has less than 400 square feet of impervious would not be charged, just because you have these slivers and things of that sort. So on the next slide, we've come up with a couple different options for how you could assess the stormwater fee for single-family residential parcels. And the reason we're looking at these options is, if you can remember, the vast majority of your parcels are single-family residential. So it's common to consider some administrative simplicities and things of that sort. So what we're looking at is, the first option would be a three-tiered structure, where we'll put single-family homes into various buckets of impervious. And I'll talk about that more in a minute, which would have a differing fee based upon the tier that you'd fall in. Another option, which some communities have implemented, would just be a uniform fee for all single families, so no recognition of any differentiation in impervious area on the single-family parcels. What we would recommend for non-single-family would be that it be based on measured impervious, and they set that as an equivalent or per equivalent residential unit. So I'll dive into the details a little bit here. So this is the distribution of single-family impervious area. On the bottom, we've got the impervious area. Has he moved left to right? And then the parcel count shows the number of parcels with this amount of impervious area that are single-family. And you can see it is a nice bell-shaped distribution, pretty typical distribution that we see when we look at stormwater utilities. And by far the most common, single-family parcel has 2,500 square feet of impervious area located on it. So given this distribution, when we look at the next slide, we can consider a kind of an administrative simplifying factor we can use, which is to put single-family homes into various tiers of impervious. And so there is statistical analysis that we do in terms of how to develop these tiers. So we take the mode, and then we look at the setting Tier 2 as a one standard deviation, which gives us those breakpoints between Tiers 1, Tier 2, and Tier 3. And then when we look at Tier 1, we essentially establish the midpoint there to to develop the fee itself, which I'll talk about in the next slide. But in terms of Tier 3, that would be anybody over 4,000 square feet of impervious. So 400 to 1,500 square feet of impervious could be put in one bucket. If you have a single-family home, that's 15 to 4,000. That's by far the vast majority, almost 3,000 parcels there. And then over 4,000 square feet would be Tier 3, and there's about 686 parcels there. So finally, on the next slide, the way that we would actually calculate the fee is we take the statistical midpoint of each of these tiers. So we look at the midpoint based on the number that fall below the midpoint and above to make sure we have a representative grouping there. And then we can actually set the fee at the same dollar per square foot for each of the midpoints. And so this turns into $2.97 for a Tier 1. Vast majority fall into Tier 2, that'd be $6.76. And then Tier 3 would be $13.79, and that's a monthly fee. So on the next slide, I just have some samples just to give you a sense for what this looks like. So residential, using this Option 1, the first tier would be a small parcel. They'd be all parcels falling in that Tier 1 would be .44 ERUs, and that's just an equivalent residential unit. Tier 2, everybody would be 1 ERU. And then Tier 3, that would be basically 2 ERUs. And then the way this is applied to non-residential parcels is you take the actual impervious area on the parcel, you divide it by that ERU, which we've defined as 2,500 square feet, and that turns into 41 ERUs for this sample parcel. So on the next slide, I have what the, just a summary of the Option 1. So again, single-family, they'd be put into their tiers based on their impervious area, the $2.97, $6.76, $13.79. You can see the equivalents, ERUs associated with that, and then the total number of parcels that fall into each. And then to the right, I have the non-single-family residential. And these are all based on actual measured impervious as a, as divided by 2,500 square feet. So you can see multifamily, you'd have about 4,490 ERUs on 895 parcels. So the multiples there, all ERUs would pay the $6.76. And just to caveat, one of the reasons why you don't do measured for all parcels is just because of the administrative burden that would would result from doing that for all single-family homes. If you wanted to take it even simpler, on the next slide, for Option 2, is you could do single-family, just treat everybody the same regardless of impervious. On single-family, there are communities that do this. They'd pay the $6.76 for everybody. And then non-residential wouldn't differ under this Option 2. So in the next few slides, I just have some samples. So this is that small parcel, 1,400 square feet of impervious. Under Option 1, they would fall into Tier 1, so they'd pay $2.97. Under Option 2, they would pay more, $6.76, because everybody would would pay the same. On the next slide is that average parcel, which has got 2,700 square feet of impervious. So 1 ERU, so it wouldn't matter to that parcel which which option you chose. They would pay the same. And then finally, a large parcel, this one's got almost 10,000 square feet of impervious, so they would be treated as 2 ERUs under Option 1, so paying the $13.79. Option 2, obviously, they'd pay less, because everybody would pay the same. And then finally, a commercial property. This property's got about 100,000 square feet of impervious. That equates to 41 ERUs, again dividing by the the definition of an ERU at 2,500. So they would pay about $277 per month in stormwater fees. Next slide. And then I just wanted to conclude this portion of the discussion with an example. And this is purely pro forma and just calculations to demonstrate kind of a status quo versus what we're talking about this evening. So if we were to generate $2 million for stormwater, and if we were to take the current approach, which is to fund it 50/50 between property taxes or the general fund and the sewer rates, that would equate to about 16 cents. So an annual cost for a typical single-family home of about $78. The sewage bill portion would be $52, that's assuming five units per month. And so in total, just on average, $130 per year for a single-family home. Whereas if you do the stormwater utility, as I mentioned, we're generating about $2 million, it would be $6.76 or $81 per year. And the reason I bring this up is it just, it gets to one of the primary issues of why a community would consider a stormwater utility. It's what Brian mentioned early on, is that it aligns the use of the system with how you recover those costs. So the value of somebody's property or how much sewage they generate or water they use really is not correlated with the use of the stormwater system. And so generally, as communities have increasing costs, they often consider transitioning to something that would be more equitable in terms of how they recover those costs. So the final section I have is just to talk about credits. And another one of the benefits of a stormwater utility is that you can offer stormwater fee credits, which are just really ongoing reductions in the fee charged to a property if they have qualifying stormwater management. And they recognize the fact that if you get a, if you get a property owner to manage stormwater on their site, it does reduce the impacts to the to the city's system and expenditures. And they have been found to encourage property owners to proactively manage their their stormwater impact. So it gives you that vehicle to to encourage proper management of stormwater. What some typical credits look like are shown here. So commercial properties, they're generally required to have certain structural BMPs. So you can offer credits for those, which would be detention basins, onsite storage, any type of green infrastructure, low-impact development practices, things of that sort. From a single-family parcel standpoint, you can offer credits for cisterns or drywells or rain gardens, things of that sort. If people put in permeable pavements or green roof, you can offer credits for those. There are communities that offer educational credits. So if you're a public or private school and you teach a qualifying curriculum, you could get a credit recognized in that community program. So if you have cleanup events, things like that, you can have credits associated with that. And then in terms of finally, social equity credits, there are communities, they're a little bit less common, but that do offer credits for low-income, financial hardships, tax-exempt, religious entities, things of that sort. So those are just some examples. I will say, on the next slide, it's important to consider how you structure the credit program to make sure that you can manage it, that it's not a, you know, huge administrative burden. But some of the typical questions you need to ask is who's eligible? So would this be something that all properties could be eligible for credits? There are communities, they only offer them to non-residential for various reasons, to simplify it, as well as generally, non-residential properties can do more to reduce their impact. But you can certainly offer it to anybody. You need to figure out what activities would qualify and how you'd verify those. You need to figure out how do you administer it. Most communities have a credit manual, some type of application, and then determine, you know, what is the credit that that's going to be offered, and is there a maximum? Most communities don't offer 100% credit. They recognize the the public benefit of managing stormwater throughout the community, so they'll generally cap the credits at at 50 or 60%. But most credit programs that I see do evolve over time. You can start small and and as you want to encourage certain behaviors, or if you're not getting the participation you want, you can certainly change the credit program. So with that, I will turn it back to Suzanne.
And I'll turn it back to the mayor for a question to answer.
Excellent. Thank you, David. Good to see you again. The, I guess, any questions from the council? Councilor Denton? Oh, all right, we'll just.
Thank you, Your Honor. First and foremost, I remember when the Stormwater Fund was created in FY19. I've been excited about the idea of an enterprise fund since it first came up conversation. When it came to the tiers between the two options which were presented, I strongly support the, while having a tiered system, but why couldn't you do the opposite of a flat fee and actually charge per square foot? Does that question make sense?
Yes, David, you spoke that pretty well. There's David.
Yeah. You could. You could charge everybody based on measured impervious, but the challenge there is just the administration in terms of, as I mentioned, I think like 70% of your parcels are single-family. So in order to simplify how you'd have to, you know, manage it, and we do see, just having, I've actually served as kind of a call center person for utility after they implemented a stormwater utility. And one of the common complaints that people would call in, and they wouldn't realize that their, they wouldn't measure their eaves on the roof. And so the impervious area is actually larger than they'd measure if they measured at the ground level. And it just kind of gets to some of those issues of how detailed you need to be in terms of the the measurements and the potential complaints and questions. But there are communities that have implemented based on actual measured for everybody.
Just based on your response, again, I'll support the tiered system. I do have some questions regarding the best practices. I saw in the budget that starting in FY, I believe it was '24, there'd be $75,000, and then that amount would increase every year. Was that solely for the city's use? Or is there any thought maybe it could be put towards like rain buckets for, rain barrels for individual households' use? I know it's years out. I'm just wondering if there's been any.
That's a very good question. Well, similar, we have the rebate program for our, you know, toilet, high-efficiency washing machines and low-flow toilets. Could be a similar thing where a portion of that money, the whole key would be, is something going to get built? That increased monies, as David and Bill spoke to, it goes like 75, 150. It goes up because each year, you're financing, we're anticipating, we would finance about a million dollars worth of infrastructure. So you're you're paying on that debt. So just like with water and sewer, you start with one year's worth of debt, then you have two years and and three years and so on. Other communities that I've seen, they fund as you go. So it's a much better way to implement, like our water and sewer, than saying, we just need a million dollars this year and and build it, because, you know, we're talking about infrastructure that is going to be there for quite a long time.
And I, one last comment. When it comes to the mitigating measures, I'd encourage you to just inquire with the Conservation Commission. They've been dealing with these kind of issues for some time. I know we're sometime off from then, but they're a good resource.
Counselor Bowe and Counselor Embardi.
Thank you, Your Honor. And thank you, Suzanne. Thank you, Brian. Thank you, Jamie, and David and Bill. I think this is a very positive thing for the community. I I want people to realize that I, I want people to realize that this is not a new tax, this is just, the cost is proportion, is a portion differently. I was looking at slide number forty-nine, and currently, an average single-family home would pay a hundred and thirty dollars towards stormwater. Under this proposal, they would save forty-eight dollars and eighty-eight cents because they would only potentially be paying eighty-one dollars and twelve cents. Am I correct in that, those assumptions?
We'll speak, have David jump back in on, on that one, David?
Yeah, that, that is correct. It's just a, like you said, it's just a realignment in terms of the proportionality. So under that circumstance, yes, single-family would pay less.
I just think, given the high property taxes, given the high taxes, and then this would re-portion those taxes to commercial properties that would pay their fair share, so I'd be very supportive of this. So thank you.
Councilor Bowe, Councilor Embardi, then Councilor Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple comments. Disappointing that PES is not included in this. There's huge impervious parking lots out there, and huge impervious buildings. Just seems like, I know that's not considered Portsmouth property, so. But we do, but we do, but we do manage their water, and their, and their stormwater too, as well, as far as I know.
So PES is, is tricky. They do have their own stormwater obligations, both under federal permit as well, which they're in the process of applying for, for a new permit, as well as agreements with, you know, other entities. So they have their own obligations. Now, the city does maintain the streets out there pursuant to the MSA. So we do limited work from a stormwater perspective within our right-of-way. But when you get past that, we really sort of fall into that. We have a different role once we get past the right-of-ways. That's not to say that there might not be some opportunities as we go forward to do more stuff jointly. We've talked about that in terms of, you know, if they discover and solicit discharge, for example, and need our assistance in helping to chase it down. So there are some opportunities for working together, but they are kind of their own separate, you know, entity out there. So that's why we wouldn't include them in this stormwater utility, at least as it, as we currently envision it, and given the current regulatory structure.
Just a quick follow-up, or do you have a follow-up directly on PES?
Beyond PES, yeah.
Beyond PES, just one question on PES. So they, they currently pay a stormwater fee as it presents itself in the usage fee for sewer, correct?
Correct. They, they are charged just like every other sewer user, yes.
Okay. How would we make sure that we're not losing money to PES if we enact something that would be separating this out as a zone enterprise fund? How do we account for PES continuing to pay their fair share, since we are moving away from stormwater as a part of the general fund and sewer fee?
That's a good question. I know we've talked a little bit about how to, how to manage that. I don't know if David, or Brian, or anyone wants to weigh in. I think that's something we need to think about.
Good point, Mayor, but I don't think we have a direct answer to that one tonight. But it, it would, I think, involve a bit more discussion with, with the PDA, which we have had. You know, we also have the new MPDES permit there, that the previous permit actually did tie stormwater in, so this is a little bit of a complicating factor there at PES, because they, and Suzanne could speak to this, but the previous permit from the discharge of the wastewater plant included this stormwater, if I'm correct. And now it's separated out, but that just came out, so.
So just on, it, it would be, I guess, helpful to know, you know, because PDA and the service agreement's a pretty big bailiwick there. So I think the council, and Councilor Embardi, including myself, would be interested to know, regardless of whether or not they have an MS four designation, what are the legal avenues that we have around even contemplating that with regard to, to, to PES moving forward, considering our, the current arrangement does provide for their payment of stormwater via the sewer rate?
Yeah, we'll, we'll give that some further thought. They're not an MS four. They have a, they've applied for a separate permit. It's the nature of the entity that they are.
Okay. All right. Sorry, Councilor.
No, that's good. That's, that's a good point. Couple other things. I, I guess because you, you say that, you know, the fifty percent of the stormwater costs now are being taken out of the sewer fund. So I assume that when this is a separate bill, if you will, the sewer, the sewer bill will drop?
All right. David, I've, you did a flimery analysis, but it was, it was somewhat, we, we do project out, councillor. So each year, as we do our rate projections, it would, it'd be factored in, so certainly, David, you could add a little bit more on that.
Sure. So right now, your budget for stormwater, a hundred and dollars? Or half of it is coming? And so when we look at that, playing it forward a couple of years, rather than potentially, I mean, we need to, need to run the analysis in future years as well as this moves forward, but given the magnitude, that's, that's not a huge component, or not a huge piece of the, of the sewer rates, if you will. And so it may be that, rather than, you know, we've talked in the past about needing to continually increase sewer rates, it may be that the city may, may be able to just hold them steady, or have less of an increase in the future as you peel those costs off. But again, your total revenue requirements on the sewer side, and this is just from memory, I think, is close to seventeen million dollars, so I think the three hundred thousand doesn't have a huge impact in terms of pulling that away, if that makes sense.
Just one, one more thing. You say that the importance of street sweeping and the, you know, catch basin cleaning, just, just an observation, street, street sweeping does not seem to go on a schedule. And I know most major cities have a schedule for street sweeping. And what I've seen, just, this is just personal observation, is that the street sweeper comes along on my street, and there's cars parked on both sides of the road. And so they can't really clear the areas that are needed to be cleared for stormwater. And so, I mean, I, I hear the street sweeper come, I run out and I move my car, I mean, so they can, but nobody else does. I, I think people think I'm a little nutsey here, but I do that. If, if it, is there any plan perhaps to put, you know, Portsmouth on a street sweeping schedule?
So councillor, this, very perceptive. It's almost as if you're, you're in some of our meetings at Public Works, because we've been working with Jamie, and this, this involves our parking division as well, so they are involved in some of the, the maintenance, especially uptown. But we are going to, to look to do more of a schedule, more of an outreach, as part of our outreach is, is actually going to message people. But a lot of communities will have like, let's say, you know, every other Tuesday night or something, this street, you, you can't park there, or certain times of the day where you have to be off that, and so that will be scheduled and, and put forward. But, you know, we'll, we'll have to work with parking on that one, and, and first, we're internally, Jamie's been working with, with Peter Rice and, and staff, you know, at Public Works and the parking, about actually implementing that, that very thing, so that we can, you know, one thing is to let people know a bit more where we're going to be, when we're going to be. Secondly, it's, again, to identify the areas where we need to, you know, have people off the street, and then, you know, be able to, to do the cleaning that way.
Having been in New York for a big part of my life, I, I'm very familiar with alternate side of the street parking.
Councilor Bagley.
Thank you, your honor. For clarity for me, the reason we're doing this is, is to meet federal and state requirements. This will not add any money or cost to the budget because we're doing this. This is stuff we'd have to do, and what we're discussing here tonight is how we're going to pay for it.
Yeah, only caveat, and let anybody else, that as we move forward as a city, the, the costs of both compliance and climate change will require more investment, especially around stormwater. And so to split those out into a separate utility, and then how do we pay for that utility based on usage, is the conversation that we're, we're having tonight. Does that, I think we're saying the same thing, but.
Yeah, I just, I guess, maybe I'm speaking a little bit to the folks at home, is we're not looking to add costs to the city. What we're looking to do is, we have costs that we have to pay, that are going to go up in the future, and we're looking for a more equitable way to pay those costs.
Yes. I would say, have to pay. I mean, I wouldn't want to give the impression that we got all the stormwater, you know, pipes in the ground that we need now, or will need in the future. We'll continue as, you know, regulations increase to require, you know, to be more, to better stewards of the water that discharges into, into the river. But the immediate, immediate, I guess, takeaway from Councilor Bowe's point is that there's a cost. Right now, it is borne on a square-footage basis, more by residential users than commercial users. And so this is to align that to the people that have the most square footage, that are creating the most stormwater runoff.
Okay, thank you. And I guess I have a, just a couple of quick comments about the, the history of sewer in Portsmouth, kind of how we got here. I did some research on the South Mill Pond, and a long time ago, there was a steam factory rope walk along the Mill Pond, and if you go back to the eighteen fifties, I couldn't research further back, but there were a lot of articles about the waste and the effluent and the smell. And as you go through the years, as many of you know, Atlantic Heights was built in nineteen eighteen, paid for by the federal government as part of the war effort. One of the crowning achievements of that was that when it was finished in nineteen eighteen, it had more bathrooms than anywhere else in Portsmouth, or, or the rest of Portsmouth combined. And it was very environmentally friendly, because they all flushed directly into the swift-moving Biscataco River. So I guess what I'm trying to say here with my long story is that, for a very long time, stormwater and sewage, because effectively, we're doing this because the sewage and the stormwater co-mingle. And when they co-mingle, we have overflows, and when the overflows happen, there's sewage in the overflow, so we're trying to reduce that from happening. If you talk to many residents who went to the middle school several decades ago, they talk about how in the fall and the spring, they couldn't open the windows, even though it was very hot, because the smell was so bad. You go on and on. We all know that when the Pierce Island Sewer Treatment Plant was built, it was quite contentious. There, it was three locations, Nobles Island, North Mill Pond, and Pierce Island being considered. We all know where it ended up. So this is all kind of a culmination of, really centuries' worth of work, and it's not adding cost to the city, in the sense that we're not creating something new that we have to pay for. It's something that we're going to have to do because, one, of regulations, and two, because we want to be good environmental stewards. And what this is doing is saying that if you want to have a giant parking lot at your residence, or at your place of business, and you're going to create more stormwater because of that, you are going to have to pay for that percentage of stormwater you create. If you want to have a small house with no driveway, so everything is permeable, you're going to have less of an impact, you're going to create less stormwater, so we're not going to charge you as much. So the way I see this is we're incentivizing residents and commercial to mitigate their stormwater, whereas now they really have no reason to, to mitigate it. So we're giving them a financial incentive to reduce the amount of stormwater. When they reduce the amount of stormwater, it's better for the environment. So this accomplishes two things. It makes a much more equitable way to charge for the stormwater runoff, and it gives everyone in town a, a financial incentive to reduce their stormwater runoff.
Thank you, Councilor Bagley. Councilor Cook, and Councilor Moreau, and Councilor David.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you so much for the presentation. It was quite, quite thorough. I do have one question around single-family residential potential appeals. I know that many single-family residential owners in, in Portsmouth have already tried to mitigate some stormwater on their properties, and that's not necessarily obvious from the maps. Is there a process envisioned for appealing? Say we do a tiered system, and, and appealing your square footage? And if so, have we budgeted for the cost of going through and doing all those appeals? Because staff clearly would have to visit site to do that.
That, councillor, that, that would likely be part of, you know, the credit program, so we do envision, you know, currently, we have, have Jamie, his staff, Dan, and Svetlana, that would, and again, this is part of the, the program. That's a great question to ask, because these are things where we can get back with a, a little more detail. But yes, we would envision, you know, just such as, let's say we had the three-tier, and somebody ends up in the third tier, and they say, wait a second, you know, I think you made a mistake. So there would be a mechanism whereby, you know, they, they would come to us, and Jamie and staff would review, and, and then we could correct if, if that were the case. That would be straightforward. But then also, if they do have a management, you know, they are doing something on property that we don't know about, then the same thing. There'd be an application, and then we validate it, and, you know, one of the, the key points of, you know, putting these BMPs in, and having a credit form, you know, because, you know, you're going to get the credit if you have a rain garden. But let's say you let it go to grass, and five years from now, it's no longer a rain garden. We would have a mechanism whereby we'd say, you know, look, you no longer are going to get the credit, because you have not maintained that. So there'd be kind of a renewal on that as well. So I, I, I think that whole program would be developed with, with that in mind.
Thank you.
Councilor Moreau. Oh, sorry, did you have another?
I was just going to add, I, I think that was part of David Hyder's kind of caution at the end, which is, keep your structure simple, at least at the beginning, because you really don't want to be spending too much staff time in the weeds over literally a buck a month. So I think that's the, you know, trying to find the right way to incentivize, but not allowing it to, to overwhelm from an administrative point of view, and lose some of the benefit of the whole model, so.
And just before to Councilor Moreau, is the, are the estimations coming from the GIS work that we have already?
Yeah, so we've been contracting for a few years now with annual updates to our aerial photography, and the pervious surface calculations are coming from, you know, the most recent photography that we are getting for the city.
Okay. So, I mean, that's kind of, is that the same thing that says like, hey, your, your, your roof could generate this much solar?
Yeah.
Like, okay. So we could imagine that the technology to at least predict how much.
It's getting better and better each year.
You talked a lot about equipment needs and going into the future, and how that would be an increased amount. Has any of these equipment needs been incorporated into the CIP already, or is it being added in over the next few years, or how is that working?
We, we currently have a brine machine program, that's the hundred thousand dollars you see. So brine, brine is a way to pre-treat the roadways, so you don't have to put as much salt down. Every now and then, you might see that when you, before a storm in the winter, you see those little lines on the road. That's actually been that pre-treatment, so. So we have looked to that. So that, that currently is in the budget, and it was identified already, but again, that cost would shift to a utility cost versus just the, the way it is in the, the split cost at the moment.
So there's no other, no other sort of large equipment costs that are going to be all of a sudden added to the CIP? added to the CIP this year for the future years?
No, not this year. But again, future years, and as Bill has identified, some of the further needs. We're talking a lot, especially on the salt reduction plan, it's equipment retrofit, so, you know, I don't have the exact number per vehicle, but it's like, you know, a $5,000 upgrade to the salt distribution that actually, you know, the mechanism to put salt on the road, but it also has equipment that does a better job of monitoring, so that we can talk to our drivers, and we can be more efficient with, you know, knowing where the salt's going down, and, you know, how much it's costing, and improving it that way.
Great, thanks.
Mr. Mayor, if I can just add, there may be pieces, brine machine is one of them, brine, not Brian, that would be found in the rolling stock.
Okay.
Part of the budget.
Council Tabor.
Three questions around peas, around the tiers, and I guess, first off, having watched the stormwater costs grow over the past three or four years, and seeing that have to be shouldered directly in property tax increases and sewer fee increases, I've just, Council Denton and I have been on the fee committee, and we dug into this a year, two years, a year ago. It's so clear to me that the fee structure, we need that to allocate the costs where they really are, which is the commercial. You know, as sewer rates and property tax rates got a little nick from these additional sewer, stormwater costs, we, residential taxpayers were essentially subsidizing Walmart parking lots, which inundate our sewer system with large amounts of stormwater. So I think when we do the tiers, though, I like the smallest tier for the, it just seems to me that somebody who keeps their environmental footprint really small should get rewarded for that. And I think that extra break makes a difference. I share the concern about peas. We do have a stormwater sewer system there, right? I mean, and it goes through the sewer plant that we fund, correct?
There, Peter or someone will correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe all the pipes out there are separated. So there's a separate storm drain system.
Right.
And then there's our sewer system out there, and the two do not meet.
Okay. So stormwater is completely separate there?
[laughing]
Which is good to know, but we still maintain all of that.
We maintain the, within the right of way. So it's narrow, and we've been careful about that delineation.
Right.
But I think it's definitely something I'm hearing that we need to talk about further, so we'll put that on the list.
Right. And, you know, I think the big move that will benefit us as a city is with these large commercial properties, there's tremendous incentive to control the stormwater runoff, either by permeable pavement in the parking lots, or swales, or ponds. And I can't imagine somebody would build a new strip mall store or plaza without really paying attention to this, which we don't have the incentive to do that now.
I will say, we did update our stormwater regulations, two years, a year ago?
Yeah, 21.
21. So they are quite tight for the properties that are coming forward for redevelopment. So one of the things we've kind of talked about is, do you just give a credit for someone who goes above and beyond the current fairly restricted stormwater rules that we've since put in to try and grab that extra bit? But they did get tightened up pretty significantly, as I recall, Bill, from that draft.
Yeah, any disturbance more than 15,000 square feet required additional treatment.
Yeah.
Yep.
And the last question is, the million dollars a year that you're estimating for capital, give us a peek into what you see that paying for. What kind of capital costs?
Retrofits to existing properties, you know, city property are first, first, well, we just did a project out back of Public Works. We have very large stormwater retention ponds out there with treatment, so it would be that. But then also build into all the roadway work that we're doing. When we did Sagamore, we put porous pavement on the side there, so we've put salt, I mean, sand filters in, we put tree box filters. So these would be things that, again, as Jamie pointed out, what, 45 or so of these already put in, that, you know, the city has funded, granted through other mechanisms as well as stormwater, but that is really what's envisioned. We're still pro forma quite a bit of this, so there's going to be, I think, further discussion on where the priorities are on that, but that's what we envisioned on that. Excuse me. Mayor, if I could, I would add an additional, you know, to Council Moreau's question on equipment, I was, in my head, real quick, I was thinking, new equipment? We do have existing equipment out in the road. We've got our Vector trucks, we have the sweepers, and those, as they come to replacement, so we do schedule those for replacement. So I would add that to the answer on that. I was, in my head, it was like, oh, new stuff, so.
I think, I mean, I wouldn't speak for all of the council, but Council Tabor, and, you know, I think the folks at home want to make sure that we're getting an additional revenue source for the city of Portsmouth to tackle, one, the equity around it currently, but, two, the proposed needs in the future. We don't want to make sure that, you know, we want to bring the same scrutiny to budget items as we would always bring to those, you know, forgetting the fact that this cost is going to be borne by other parts, and potentially other property owners, commercial versus residential. Just making sure that we're still bringing the same due diligence to all of the costs, and understand this is pro forma, and understand that regulations increase, you know, as they will, but to make sure that we're continuing to bring that, and not looking at this as any sort of windfall, which it is not. It is simply a reallocation of costs to do the work that is necessary as a city to manage our stormwater. Council Bagley? Now, we do have public comment after this.
I'll be quick, Your Honor, thank you. So from the councils that have spoke about it, it seems like option one, the three tiers, seems to have the most support so far, which is, you know, the smaller your property is, the less you're going to pay. Now, I do have a question. When you get above, say, a certain amount of square footage, that would more or less shift you from residential to commercial. With our water use, I believe after six units, you now pay a higher price per unit?
Let's see, no, the average is five, it's 10, 10 units per month.
Okay, so I guess, my point is, is it possible, so we're looking at 2.7 cents per unit, could we have, is it possible to have it, if you use more than, you know, from 0 to 5,000 units, it's 2.7 cents, but from 5,000 units to infinity, it's 4 cents? Is it possible to have escalator to?
Different tiers or increasing?
Yeah, so...
That's a David question again, I don't, I think...
Yeah, I'd be happy to jump in on that one. We really can't charge a different, the only way we've seen communities differentiate the fee per square foot would be if you're, if you're like a gas station or something like that, that has a higher impact to the system in terms of the constituents that would runoff. So generally, you want to keep the same fee, but what you could do, and we talked about this preliminarily with city staff, is you could have three tiers, which stop at a certain point, and say, well, once you're over 8,000 square feet of impervious, or 10,000 square feet of impervious, even if you're a single-family home, you're now measured. So that's kind of a common approach, because that third tier is pretty wide in terms of the distribution between, you know, the cutoff and the endpoint. And so that would be one way to tackle that issue, so that you just put everybody in tiers unless you're, you know, exceeding a certain size, if that makes sense.
I think that answers my question, but I would like us to investigate legally in the state of New Hampshire, is if, say, you had more than, I'm going to say 5,000, but the number could be flexible, maybe it's 10,000, that we would charge 133% of the rate that we charge from 0 to 5,000. So that you have more incentive, the bigger, what I'm trying to create here is that if you have a huge parking lot that's already existing, say Walmart, for example, you have even more incentive to figure out how to mitigate your stormwater runoff from a financial perspective.
That's one we'll have to dig into a little bit, a little bit deeper. Yeah, we can certainly investigate.
Thanks, David. Any other questions from the council? And this is going to come back again to many times, or not many times, more than once. And, you know, before we go to public comment, thank you for this presentation, it's something that I think makes a lot of sense, especially given that it's a cost we incur, and understanding how to most equitably distribute that cost, and the benefit, you know, us equally as a community. So, thank you. With that, we'll open a public comment. Do we have a timer? Three minutes for first round?
We can do the timer.
All right, we can do the watch timer that scares me each time it goes off. But is there anybody that would like to come up to the podium? Just name residents, and ask the Portsmouth folks to go first.
Good evening, Esther Kennedy, 41 Pickering Ave. As someone who has been following stormwater runoff since my graduate school days and doing research projects on it, I have always said that this is going to be one of our biggest concerns for the city. At one point in one of my campaign speeches, I said, there's three problems that the city's going to have to deal with, and it's water, water, and water. And now we're finally getting to stormwater. I guess, my first thing is, I want to stress the importance of buffer zone in stormwater, and I would ask the research people to give their input on that. I also think that we should look at the reduction that we're going to see in our wastewater finances. I didn't hear that today, I heard that we're going to move things over, but I'm assuming if we're going to move things over, we're going to have a reduction in what I have to pay as a citizen for wastewater. So I guess I'd like to really see that. I'm also a little perplexed, I actually spent yesterday traveling, so I had some time to go on the federal website and look at stormwater, and I'm hoping some of you have too. And some of the recommendations for communities and whatnot. And I'm a little perplexed at the fact that one of the things is requirement of treatment for stormwater. Yet we've spent millions and millions and millions of dollars over the years separating stormwater. So I guess, where does that fall into all this? I know we separate it for a reason, but if we're eventually going to be required, as a long-term goal, to clean it, or show that we've taken some of the particles that we now have in our environment out of it, and we're looking, we're going to have to look at runoff places and measurement of nitrogen and all those things, and other chemicals, I'm really perplexed about the millions and millions of dollars we spent on separation, if ultimately, we're going to have to make sure that our stormwater is to a level and a purification of that, that we can dump back into an ocean, be in an ocean community. And what I did learn is, in different areas of, you know, separation and different areas of stormwater, depending on where you are, is very different process, and very different ways of getting it done, and very different permits. So, again, I'm perplexed, being in an ocean community, and given where much of our runoff is going, what does that look like? I do agree that each, I'm glad to see that residents, I'll speak again.
Thank you, Esther. Any other first-time speakers?
Ladies and gentlemen, Paige Trace, 27 Hancock Street. Members of the City Council, Mr. Mayor. It's not complex. It is very disgusting to me, though, that you are considering charging residents for stormwater coming off of their roofs, and yet you still dump hundreds of thousands of gallons of waste, combined with stormwater, into a dead estuary that's dead because of that combined waste going into it. And now you're going to charge us as residents while you, as the city, continue to dump into North Mill Pond. That's wrong. Thank you.
Thank you, Paige. Any other first-time speakers?
Good evening, Petra Huda, 280 South Street. I too have done some research over the weekend. So I only went back seven years to figure out how much we have put into our stormwater cost centers in our budgets, and it was about 2.8 million. So that has been funded by the taxpayers of Portsmouth for the last at least seven years. If this went into effect in 2014, the taxpayers had been funding this. So I think this is a great idea to establish a revenue center to pay for this. My big question here is, is this going to be the only place we are paying for this as taxpayers? Because in order to do that, in order to make this a revenue center, you need to move all the expenses related to the city staff and all the departments over to this and fund it, to be pure and to have us only paying once. Otherwise, it looks like we're going to be double-dipping on the taxpayers again to pay for this. Thank you.
Thank you, Petra. Any other first-time speakers? Any second time, oh.
I thought it was not a resident.
That's fine, yep. Come on up, Melissa.
Good evening, and thank you for taking my comments. I'm Melissa Paley, I'm the Great Bay Piscataqua Water Keeper with Conservation Law Foundation. It was an excellent presentation, Suzanne, I commend you and the team for pulling this together to explore equitable ways to allocate what we know are going to be increasing costs to manage both quantity and quality of water as we experience events like two and a half inches of rain in a very short time. Those are going to be increasingly frequent events interspersed with long periods of drought, and that's the kind of new normal that we expect. I thought I'd just provide a super-quick context on the role of stormwater in the water quality issues that we're experiencing in the Great Bay Estuary as a whole. When we think about one particular pollutant, that, the nitrogen pollution in the estuary, which is a primary concern, about one-third of that load comes from our point sources, our 18 wastewater treatment facilities in the communities around the Great Bay Estuary. That means two-thirds are coming from non-point sources, and stormwater is a major contributor of all of that non-point source nitrogen load. So if you look at that, consider now the two-thirds of the pie that's the nitrogen, about two-thirds of that is what you would be able to mitigate through this enhanced stormwater management program that you're financing or considering financing mechanisms for. So that's all that stuff that's running into the estuary every time it rains with nitrogen, not just nitrogen, but sediment and other pollutants as well. So by really coming to a sustainable funding model for stormwater, you're addressing not just the nitrogen, many of the pollution problems caused by nitrogen, but other stormwater pollutants, sediment being a principal one. So it's a really significant... So it's a really significant decision that you're discussing, and one that we're keenly interested in. And I will say also that Portsmouth was one of the three signatories to a settlement agreement with Conservation Law Foundation in 2021 that enabled the total nitrogen general permit to go into effect. And one of the components in that settlement agreement was an agreement to explore sustainable funding mechanisms for stormwater management by December 2023. So that's exactly what you're doing here, and it's really excellent to see this very thorough and thoughtful deliberation going on. So thank you very much, and I look forward to following your discussions.
Thank you, Melissa. Any other first-time speakers?
Dick Bagley, 213 Pleasant Street. Just a couple of observations and comments. I think the idea behind this is equitable payment, and it certainly makes sense. I have, I live on Pleasant Street, right at the corner of Junkins, and we have a foot of water there because, Counselor, the leaves clog that drain all the time, and there's no parked cars at that location. Street sweepers never come, but that's beside the point. And the street sweepers have a good deal of difficulty picking up that volume of leaves. It's just a speed sweeper. It picks up sand, not much more. Sog leaves don't work. But my point here is that we have a tremendous CSO problem still, in spite of our separation. In the month of September, in your own report, we dumped combined sewage water of 4 million gallons into South Mill Pond. Did you hear what I said? 4 million gallons. This happens continuously. Can you imagine what would have happened if Ian hit us instead of Eastern Canada? We have climate change, we are going to get severe weather patterns. You've mentioned two and a half inches of rain. It's not unreasonable that we're going to see regularly four and six inches of rain, and we're going to have CSOs galore. And it's pretty much been 10A and 10B, not the North Mill Pond. So all of that data's on your website for the Sewer Department. I think the mayor raised a good point. We charge in enterprise funds for the delivery of the water and the sewage in return, and we have Rye, Newcastle, and Greenland in that system. So it isn't just a simple equation of, if you have a stormwater fund, which is only for us and it doesn't include peas, you're sort of need to look at the whole dynamics. What I heard is, well, maybe the sewer rates won't go up as fast. So I didn't see an analysis of that. The last quick point that I'd make, it's kind of outrageous to the comments that Counselor Bagley made. If you look at the history, we came here 16 years ago, and we live opposite South Mill Pond, and the smell was outrageous. If you look at 10A and TB, 10B, there's this little sign like this that was put there probably in the mid-1800s, where we put in the sewer system, it says, beware, there's sewer outlets going on here. One is in front of the middle school, and the other is one further down near the Junkins Avenue. And if you read your own regulations, there's no, you can swim in South Mill Pond, but you can't swim if there's been an overflow for eight hours. It seems to me that the recognition of what's going into South Mill Pond and North Mill Pond should be more prominent than this little six-by-six sign that's below you, we're dumping raw sewage into the pond. So that's a little bit apart from why you're here tonight. I appreciate the concept of what you're trying to do, and it makes all the sense in the world. And the only other thing is, we live, you know, equine and sever life, is if you talk to the Conservation Commission, this idea of having pools of water everywhere in the city is not a good idea for mosquitoes. You also, we have a serious rat problem. I hate to say it publicly, but we have a serious rat problem in our city, and it sort of isn't, you have to really think through the whole, I think, as Counselor Dan said, you've got to think through the whole conservation approach here. It's not just a simple cost. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dick. Any other first-time speakers? Any second-time speakers?
Ladies and gentlemen, I want to thank Melissa Paley for her comments, and Mr. Bagley. They were truly wonderful, and they're very sincere. South Mill Pond, something that I neglected to clarify, is an estuary. It's not just a pond. And so when I spoke earlier about hundreds of thousands of gallons of raw sewage, it wasn't, I was being generous, because God knows, and they're correct, how many millions of gallons go into South Mill Pond. And I would be the first person to pay for stormwater. But I'm asking, please, take care of A before you move to B and then to C. And when I was sitting in your spots, the first thing I did was move up Islington Street, and it wasn't just to give better sidewalks, it was to finish the stormwater and sewer separation. Because one of the first things I learned from Mr. Dismaris and Mr. Rice is that the best practice is to have the sewage go for as long a period of time in the pipes as it possibly can. So what was the first thing that happened when we were no longer councillors? You took off Islington Street and moved it further out, instead of taking care of it as it should have been with 100-year-old pipes. So I'm asking you now, please, look at everything else there is, because as wonderful as separating stormwater is, I don't think it's right that you should charge us by the roof size when an estuary is dead. South Mill Pond is dead, and you're going to do with a lot of infiltration and development on North Mill Pond, you're going to run the risk of doing that also. So please, think before you start pushing stormwater, and make sure you've got everything done properly. And I thank you all, and I know it's a long night, and I'm sorry, but it's important. Thank you.
Thank you, Paige. Any other second-time speakers?
Esther Kennedy, 41 Pickering Ave, second-time speaker. I'd like to continue on with where I was going. My ultimate concern is also peas. There's a lot of estuaries there, and when we were fighting the wastewater treatment plant, being on the end of Pierce Island, and we were requesting to move up to peas, one of the reasons was just so that we could handle everything up there and do it appropriately. You know, I realize that there's a major agreement, but we still, as a city, have a lot of financial responsibility for peas. So I'm glad the councillor and the mayor asked about peas. I was going to ask myself about peas. I really can't wait to hear the answer to that. The other thing we know about peas is, there's a lot of impervious area out there, and my question is, what's part of the airport, and what's part that's not in the airport segment? And I would really like to know what is the coverage of those areas. As you know, we have more responsibility for non-airport areas. My last comment is Jones Ave. We know there is, same thing as Coakley, is over in Jones Ave, and we have heard for years from people concerned with runoff, concerned with stormwater there and in that really precious estuary. And I guess I want to know where the studies are on that particular area, and what is happening over in Jones Ave, and with stormwater runoff, in particular over our not superfund site, but could be superfund site, as what I was told by the EPA at one point. I think this is a serious business, and I know, I agree. I am the number-one recipient of South Mill Pond crap. I smell it, I know, I'm right there, folks, so I know it's a problem. I get all the texts from the city, when we have storm, major rain, we have some problems. But I think these are kind of combined. I think it's, we have to work on all water. We have to think about our drinking water so we can have people drink, we have to think about our wastewater, because we're not doing a good job there, and now we have to really focus on our stormwater. And so my last comment is, what's the education? What are you going to do? Because there's some toolkits on the federal website, but what are you going to do to educate the population about how they can make their properties more able to comprehend it and deal with stormwater? I personally have chosen not to put down any kind of impervious pavement. I have stones all over the place, so all I have to really do is worry about my roof and my barn. And I made that a conscious decision because I knew this. What about all the other people that are doing new builds? When are you going to let them know? When are you going to give them the information? This has been around for, since 2014? 2004, I think, was actually what the federal website says when I first started doing major research on it. When are you going to let people know so they don't keep building buildings that are wrong? When are you going to inform your land use boards and educate them? Those are the questions you should be asking tonight, so that we don't keep moving forward. We're going to have to fix what's already been built, but how do we take care of it so it doesn't keep moving forward and still become a problem and ultimately become a financial burden on whoever might do that extra unit on their house or the extra barn? Thank you.
Thank you, Esther. With that, we'll move to adjourn the meeting. Thank you all for coming out. Lot to digest and hopefully move forward on. Do we have next steps on this, Suzanne? Is it coming up before the council?
I think what we'll do is, staff will take what they heard tonight, some of the outstanding questions, and we're going to continue to crunch numbers and look at some other options, and then we'll, I'm sure, probably set up another work session where we can begin to figure out the next steps to take it.
Great. Thank you, everyone. Good night, Portsmouth.
Thank you.